Meeting will come to order. This is the Cache County Council meeting, Tuesday, January 11th, 2022. We welcome everybody who's here and those that may be watching online. We will begin this evening with an opening from our council member, Carl Ward. Carl.
John Adams said that our constitution was made only for a moral and a religious people. So with that, I'd like to start with a prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we come to Thee at the beginning of this Cache County Council meeting and express gratitude for being able to live in a free land, to live among moral and religious people, to be able to share solutions for the challenges which are faced in our county and communities, to be able to work toward the common good of all of our citizens. We pray for Thy Spirit to be with us as we discuss this night, to guide us and direct us in the things that we do, that we'll make decisions which are sound and which are beneficial and which make sense. We pray for Thy Spirit to be with us and do this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
If you'll stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carl. Next item is the review and approval of the agenda.
Chair, I'd like to, before we approve that, is move item 11B right up to the beginning due to a time constraint for Diana.
Okay. Been moved to approve the agenda, but amended to move item 11B to after number four. Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, moving item 11B to in between four and five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, review and approval of the minutes for both December 7th and December 14th, 2021. Do we have any changes or additions to the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of those meetings.
Okay, for a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of December 7th and December 14th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll now move to item 11B, which was two hardship cases. Deputy Schaefer, can you come up and give us a short introduction about this agenda item, please?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You have before you the two hardship cases that we tried to get on the December agendas, so hopefully you all got a chance to peek at those. The auditor's office comes with a strong recommendation for approval on both of those as they're well under the indigent level.
Thank you. Any questions for Diana? Is there a motion to take action on these?
I'd move that we approve the property tax hardships request as submitted by the clerk's office.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve these two hardship requests as submitted by the clerk's office. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move to the report of the county executive. Executive Zook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of items I have for you this evening, several appointments to start off with. I have an appointment to the Bear River Board of Health, and Dr. Jim Davis has retired from that board after tremendous service, and it is my honor to recommend to you for appointment Dr. Ed Redd. Dr. Redd worked for the Health Department for many years and has been involved in many aspects of public health in our community, including working in our mental health system, working in our criminal justice system, serving as a state legislator, and I can't imagine a more qualified person to serve on our Board of Health. So I would like to propose his name for your advice and consent at this time.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Dr. Ed Redd to the Bear River Board of Health. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your support on that. The next appointment I have is for Cache County Roads Special Service District, and this is a special service district that essentially functions as an internal committee. The secure rural roads funding is sent to us by the state, and based on the legislation, we cannot receive it as a government agency, so we have to set up a separate district to receive it. So historically, our previous county executive, Josh Runhar, who was over Public Works and Cameron, were the three who oversaw that. Essentially what happens is we get $50,000 to $100,000 a year that is passed through to us, and then we allocate that to road projects and the Public Works Department. So what's before you tonight is to appoint myself, Matthew Phillips, our Public Works Director, and continuing with Cameron Jensen on our Cache County Roads Special Service District.
Counsel, entertain a motion to make those appointments.
Madam Chair, I would move that we go ahead and appoint those individuals that has been presented to us for the Road Department group.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Executive Zook, Matt Phillips, and Cameron Jensen to the Roads Special Service District. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. The next one that I have is for the RAPS Committee. We had a representative from the Northeast District, from North Logan, Becky Jobe, who was representing that seat, who has moved out of that district and therefore needs to be replaced, and the name that I would like to appoint for your advice and consent is Damon Can, who is the recently retired mayor of North Logan.
What was the name again? I'm sorry.
Damon Can, former mayor of North Logan, Damon Can, to serve on the RAPS Committee, representing the Northeast District.
As the rest of them, I'll still plan them on survey.
We will potentially reappoint those, but we haven't made it through discussing with each of them if they plan to serve still. This one, we just, she contacted us, but she had moved, so we thought we'd move forward with it right there.
Okay, move to approve the...
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Damon Can as the Northeast District Representative to the RAPS Committee. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thanks again for that one. The next appointment I have for you is for Cache County Planning Commission, and we had Commissioner Philip Olson, whose term has expired, and he's expressed a desire to step down at the end of that term, which just ended, and I spoke with a number of potential candidates for this position, and the name that I would propose for appointment, for your advice and consent this evening, is Nathan Dawes, who happens to be here this evening. He runs our Cache Water District, and I think a lot of you know him, so his is the name I would recommend for Planning Commission this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Nathan Dawes as the Cache County, to the Cache County Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. And I have one more appointment for you. The last appointment I have for you this evening is for the Utah Association of Counties Governing Board, and Councilmember David Erickson has served in that role for the past year, and in discussing with him, he would like to continue to serve in that role, and thank you, Councilmember Erickson, for being willing to do that. So I would appoint him to that position with your advice and consent.
I would move that we reappoint David Erickson to the UAC Governing Board.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint David Erickson to the UAC Governing Board. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous, Dave.
Guess you gotta go, Dave.
Yeah.
Thanks for continuing to serve.
The 19th is our next meeting.
I just have a couple of more quick items for you. Financial reports, your December 2021 expense report warrant register has been provided for your information, and just a couple of brief reports. I had a meeting this morning with our legislators from the Valley and the Chamber of Commerce with their Legislative Committee. They're prepping for the legislative session. There are a number of bills they're working on that we're going to be interested in and we're going to want to support and track, so just in that light, I just wanted to remind everybody the legislative session will be upon us before we know, and if there are any legislative needs that you're aware of that you would like us to be helping with, please let us know about those. Let me know so we can help with those. One of those that is going to be there, I just had a meeting yesterday with UDOT about one of the priority issues that I've been working on over the past year, and that's getting cell towers in Logan Canyon. The Governor's Office has proposed to fund putting fiber optic cable through the canyon. That's in the Governor's proposed budget. The Legislature will be reviewing that, and hopefully that will be approved by the Legislature, in which case they'll be able to install the fiber optic, which is the beginning step that needs to be done before the cell towers can be put in. So that's a good step forward. It's just a proposal at this point, but we will be talking to our legislators about supporting that issue. I also had the opportunity this past Saturday to attend the Children's Justice Center Annual Strategic Planning Summit, and Chairwoman Tina Worthing was able to attend as well. Just wanted to thank the staff and members of our Children's Justice Center, as well as the Friends Group, which is a nonprofit organization that supports our Children's Justice Center, for the tremendous work they do throughout the year. They had a good session, and I think we're in good hands there. We had a visit this past week from Representative Blake Moore. He came up to our county and made a couple of visits, and he asked me if I would put together a lunch so he could meet all of our new mayors. If you're not aware, we have 19 mayors in the county, and 10 of them are brand new now. We have 10 brand new mayors out of the 19, and so he took the time to come up here and to meet them and to express his willingness to help with anything that we need up here. There were a couple of items that were brought to its attention that they would like his help on, and just want to thank Representative Moore for taking the time to come up here this week. There is one other suicide prevention event that is coming up on the 27th of this month. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of this. The name of the event is "It's Not Weak to Speak," and this is something we're partnering with the Suicide Prevention Coalition on, and the intent of the training is to provide people with information about how to talk to those suffering with mental health crises and facing suicidal ideation. It's a very difficult topic, and it's something that a lot of people find challenging to address, and that's why we're providing this training. It will be on the 27th at the event center. There will be two sessions, one at noon and one at 6:00 PM, and I would encourage everybody to attend. It's free to attend, and the noon session will actually provide lunch if you are SCP. The last item I have, and then I'll be quiet and let you move on with the rest of your meeting, just wanted to give you an update on the Lewiston Irrigation Project. We've had some meetings with them. The county council's office is working on an agreement with them, and we will likely have that on the next agenda with that agreement, assuming that, I don't see our county attorney, it looks like our county attorney stepped out, but his office has been working on an agreement with the now company, and hopefully that will be ready by next time, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. And that concludes my report this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Executive Zook. Appreciate that. Before we move on, I just want to remind those in the audience to sign in at the clerk's desk so that we have a record that you were here, so if you haven't done that, take a chance, take a minute and do it, or when you leave, sign in.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment at this time. We have some special guests that are coming here to learn about county government. We've got Bishop Kelly and the Spring Creek Ward, young men sitting in the back, and they're all ears, and they're going to learn a great deal about how we operate on a county basis. We've also got Val and Nancy Potter, our past chair and his lovely wife, and we appreciate you having them here, so welcome. I think also the young men from College Ward are supposed to come, and when they come, I'll have to put, oh, we only got two of them? Well, I don't know where your bishop is, but anyway, we're glad to have you as well. Whenever you come from College Ward, you have to put your hand over your heart, geez, that's a pretty special place, so welcome. Turn it back to you.
I think that's everyone from College Ward though, isn't it?
You don't need to put that in the minutes.
No, that's a special time. We gotta put that in the minute.
Courtney, thank you for that recognition. That's appreciated, and it is fun to see Val and Nancy. Okay, we'll move to items 6A, election of council chair and vice chair for 2022. I would like to thank the council for letting me serve as chair. I've learned a lot, and you know, sometimes we have chairs serve for two years. Carl has served for two years, and I understand the value of that, but I'm not going to ask for that because as first vice president of the Utah Association of Counties, I want to be able to focus my time there and make sure that Cache is well represented and that I do a good job at UAC, and that will be taking my time. So with that, I will open nominations for chair, and P.S., I hope you choose Barbara because she'd be awesome.
Thank you, thank you, Gina. I just want to express my appreciation for the tremendous amount of work that you have put into this and the tremendous leadership you've provided for us. You've done a wonderful job, so thank you.
Carl, thank you.
And with that, I would like to nominate Barbara Tidwell as the next chair and Paul Borup as the vice chair.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We have Barbara Tidwell as our chair and Paul Borup as our vice chair. Is there any further discussion?
Are you too willing to serve and put in as much time as is necessary?
Well, I kind of feel like the farmer that entered the mule in the Kentucky Derby. Somebody asked him if he thought the mule could win, and he said, "There's no way in heck that mule's going to win, but the association is doing some good, so, you know, if you'll have me, I'd be happy to serve you."
Same here.
Well, I'll support both of you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Didn't think so. Congratulations, and Barbara and Paul, I know you two will do an awesome job. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you. Now, Paul, there's a special assignment with the vice chair. You know, you're in charge of parties, and that's a most...
They're going downhill fast, so we'll try to help.
And it'll be fun to hear Madam Chair and have it not be me, so it's awesome.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we will move to item 6B, the Bear River Mental Health Audit of Financial Statements. We have Rob Johnson from Bear River Mental Health.
I think you all have an electronic copy. Would you like a paper copy also, anyone?
I would like one.
Yes, so we can keep track of you.
I'll take one, too.
I like paper better, anyway.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State law requires that each of you certify that you've received a copy of the audit and had an interview with a, one of the management team. Executive Zook heard the auditors present this, so Executive Zook, if you have anything to add, please chime in, and this is the certification that you've seen it. I'll give that to Janine. So let's start on page five. This is the independent auditor's opinion. In the second paragraph, they write, "In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of Bear River Mental Health Services, Inc. as of June 30th, 2021 and 2020, and the changes in its net assets and its cash flows for the years then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." So the auditor just, they say that's a clean opinion and a clean audit. If you'll turn to page 27, this is the auditor's report to the Board of Directors, and down near there, the end, they just write that "We did not identify any significant control, deficiencies, or other matters during the audit," and you can read the detail of what they look at. They didn't have any issues with Bear River Mental Health, and we didn't have any issues with them. Couple of pages before that, on page 25, is their report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance, and the second to the last sentence on that page, they write, "During our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be a material weakness." And on the next page, the last sentence of the first paragraph there, "The results of our tests disclose no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards." Then if you'll turn to page nine, I'll take you through just a few of the highlights in the financial statements, then review one of the new notes to the financial statements, and then open it up for any questions. So page nine is the statement of activities or the income statement, and a couple of things to point out. One of the things I always like to do when I come and talk to the county is you can see the county revenue there, the third line down in this report, the $468,000. If you think of our funding, it's like an upside-down pyramid, and it all balances on that county funding. So your county, your funding matches the state funding, and then those county and state dollars bring, match the Medicaid dollars and allow us, so that $468,000 from the three counties allows us to bring in the 14, over $14 million to provide mental health services in the tri-county area, and we really appreciate your willingness to fund that. You can see that our revenue was up. The biggest line item where revenue went up was with Medicaid, and the public health emergency has made it so that they cannot drop anyone off the Medicaid rolls, so we've had significantly more people on Medicaid, which has increased the revenue, and this is also the first full year of the expansion where Bear River Mental Health had all of the expansion population under our capitated program.
These are paid revenues?
Yes.
Okay, not projected.
Yeah, these are actual revenues, and then...
Medicaid's kind of known for...
Yeah.
We promise you.
Yeah. These are actual revenues, and it's, we're a capitated system where we get paid a set amount for all of the, for each Medicaid eligible in the area, and then we provide all the services that they, that are medically necessary for them at risk. And then our expenses were just under $13 million, so our net income was just under $2 million, and the public health emergency has been good to mental health across the whole state. That's pretty comparable to where the other mental health centers in the state are at. If we can turn to page eight, the previous page, is the statement of financial position or the balance sheet. Cash is up a little bit. The biggest contributor there is the net income for the year. Also look down at the unexpended county funds there, the $77,935. If you ever, if you ever put in more than what we actually need for the 20% match for the state, we put it on our books as a, as an unexpended fund that you can use in the future if the state in mid-year comes up with an increase that you guys haven't funded in your budget, you can use that. Of that, the majority of that's with Box Elder County. Cache County's portion of that's just under $17,000 in that. Then if we go to page 20, I'm going to talk a little bit more about Medicaid here. This is a new note in our financial statements. So the expansion part of Medicaid is actually, all of it's at risk, but the expansion part of Medicaid has a risk corridor, and this note explains this risk corridor, and we do a medical loss ratio for Medicaid, and if it's in certain areas, we don't pay them back or they don't pay us anything, but if we, if they give us too much money and we don't spend 91% of it, we pay them money back till it gets to 91%. And if, if, if we, if we spend more than we should, then they pay us if we haven't spent as, if we spend more than we, than the medical loss ratio, they actually pay us to bring the medical, medical loss ratio down into the range, and for 2020, they may owe us money. They're still in review of the report that we've sent in, and for 2021, the reports still haven't gone to Medicaid, so they haven't been reviewed, so there's no way to project whether they will owe us money or we will owe them. So there's nothing accrued in here, and that's my report. If you have any questions, I'll try and answer them for you.
How did your workforce change between 2020 to 2021? It looks like there's some pretty material movements in a couple of these categories as far as just work environments and workforce in general.
So with Medicaid expansion, we had to be able to serve a lot more Medicaid folks, so we did hire, we did try and hire staff. Like everyone else, it's hard to hire anyone right now, especially in, in our industry, especially therapists. It's getting hard to hire anyone, but the therapists have been tough to hire for the last few years. We have done better than most of the rest of the people in the state. I think it's because we have such a great place to live, but it's become a real difficult thing.
So those therapists you're hiring, are you hiring them as obviously employees and then they're utilizing your facilities?
Yes.
Did you expand square footage?
Did not.
Nothing like that?
No.
Any other questions, counsel?
Notice that we had a 900% increase in 2021 over 2020 in COVID, I think, so I guess that was a lot of your effort in Bear River Mental Health.
We didn't get much in, in 2020. 2021, we got some. More's coming. I think it's a lot like with the counties, we'll have more in 2022 than we had in 21, too. The biggest, the biggest gain for the mental health system is the eligibles stay on, and the FMAP, we pay our own match. That's what we use the state and county with Medicaid, we pay our own match, and there's a 6% reduction in the FMAP percentage, which is a significant amount each quarter, $150,000 about each quarter that we reduce in what we have to pay for match.
Any other questions?
Rob, would you just briefly explain one more time how our contribution is multiplied?
You bet. So state law says that any money that they give to the local mental health authorities has to have a, for every dollar that they give, the counties are required to put in 20 cents. So that's that five to one. The county dollar brings down five state dollars. Then we take those state and county dollars and we, we draw down the Medicaid money because it requires state and county tax dollars to draw that down, and when they expanded the state plan to include a lot of the mental health services with Medicaid, the mental health system said that they would use their state and county dollars to pay that match, and that's why the legislature agreed to open up those services, and so those state and county dollars bring down that, you know, $11 million in Medicaid. That's how that works.
Thank you for doing that.
You bet.
I just, maybe I should have said this as an introduction to why we're doing this, just for the benefit of the public, as well as anyone in our organization who's not aware, but in Utah, counties are responsible for mental health at the local level, and at some point in the past, back in the 70s, I guess, because this organization's been around since 1977, we decided that it would be more efficient to partner together with our neighboring counties to do this, and so we have a partnership between Box Elder and Rich Counties and have this nonprofit organization, it was set up as a nonprofit in 1983, and through this nonprofit organization, we're able to leverage contributions from each of our three counties against these other dollars of state and federal sources. And, and through that organization, provide mental health services to our community. It's a great deal for our community and each of our counties has a representative on that board as an elected official, as well as some citizen representatives. And I've had the honor of serving on that board over the past year. And I can just tell you that I've been so impressed with the organization, how much they do in serving those in need in our community. And you, you hear me talk a lot about mental health issues here. And I know some people have asked me, well, why are you working on that? It, it's our responsibility, this is one of our responsibilities, is, is mental health in our community. And we have a great organization and partnership with our neighboring counties through Bear River Mental Health. And I just want to thank the staff and the organization as a whole for the work they do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate you being here and bringing the report. Okay, so we still left it on the agenda, 5:30 public hearings, we just need to set public hearings. So we have four public hearings that we need to set. And I'll, I'll mention on this first one, on an ordinance changing the salaries of the Cash County elected officials and members of the county council. Although we passed some changes, our county attorney informed us that we had not done a public hearing, even though our, we thought we had, because usually what we did was we just wrapped that in with our budget hearing. But looking at it, we wanted to make sure we were more transparent and John determined that, that we hadn't done that. So we're going to go back and redo that. John, did you want to say anything about that?
The code required, state code, excuse me, and county code that require that if there's a proposal to change elected official salaries, the public notice be given of that proposal and then a hearing held. And the assumption has been that the hearing on the budget would qualify, but the budget proposal before the hearing on the budget did not include elected official salaries. So I determined that that, where the notice of the budget proposal did not give the public notice that those salaries would be changing, that there really hadn't been the required notice of change, of a proposal and changes to salaries. A specific notice of a proposal to change public official salaries ought to be given. I agree on that particular topic held.
It wasn't enough, that that was part of the, of the, the writing in the agenda, that that would be one of the items discussed. Well, I know that we have, we have been discussing that for almost every meeting for two and a half months. As I looked at the agendas that we've been having out, that was one of the line items that said that we were going to discuss was the salaries of elected officials. And I was under the impression that that was what we needed to do. And now all of a sudden, we've got to hold a specific meeting and public hearing for that when it's already been announced that that would be one of the items in our county budget. Is that not correct?
I would need to go back to the agenda prior to the hearing on the budget. I've, I've not been aware that, whether there was specific language in that agenda.
I mean, it's not as specific as what you're asking us to do now. But it did say several times when we had that on our agenda, that that would be what would be discussed was the salaries of elected officials. And I guess I'm tired and I told the, the chair, when it come up again, I'm tired, I have to discuss this. Every meeting, we have to go over this and go over this and go over this. And I don't know, maybe that's what the public wants to hear is us going over that and over that and over that.
I don't blame you for being tired of it. My, my, as I've seen the, the public record and granted, I've not gone back and looked at the agenda prior to the hearing on the budget, but there would need to be, prior to a hearing, that specific notice of the proposed change in.
Is it because, is it because it's a separate ordinance compared to the budget ordinance? That we need to make sure we set a public hearing for each one?
I believe that that would be the, the most correct way.
Even though they're part of each other?
Which is exemplified by the fact that the budget set aside money, that the ordinance that was passed last time was different than what was proposed in the budget.
But it's because they're two different ordinances, they need to have separate hearings.
Is there a question over here?
And like losing spice.
Yeah.
Three times, four times, I wouldn't use it.
I mentioned it is very, very, very difficult for the counsel to have to sit and talk about elected official salaries, you know, week after week, or meeting after meeting after meeting, when, you know, I don't know if that's exactly, we have to continue to do it again, even into another year. But we'll follow our counsel, and if that's what he says we do, then we'll do it.
That being said, do you want to make a motion to set the public hearing?
I would, I would make a motion that we go ahead and set a public hearing to have the public input on the salaries of elected and council members. On the 20, was it 27? 25th of January, so it'd be in two weeks.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to set a public hearing for January 25th on an ordinance changing the salaries of the county elected officials and the county council. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We need to set a public hearing also for January 25th on the Lewis Rezone, a request to rezone 30 acres on two parcels from the agriculture zone to the rural two zone, located about 6,200 south, sixth west, near Hyrum. I'm just going to read all three of these. A public hearing for January 25th on the Brook Hansen Smithfield West Rezone, request to rezone 14.37 acres from the agriculture A10 zone to the rural two, RU2 zone, located at 6,550 north, fourth west, near Smithfield. And we need to set a public hearing also for January 25th. That's going to be a great meeting for your first time, Barbara.
Sounds good.
If we get a lot of people in here. The Cub River Estates Two Rezone, 26.35 acres from the agriculture A10 zone to the rural five, RU5 zone, located at 780 east, 124,000 north.
I move that we set the public hearings for all three of those that were mentioned by you in detail.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to set those three public hearings for January 25th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Sound like an aye, okay. All right, thank you, counsel. Try not to stutter when you're voting, it confuses me. Okay, we now move back to item 6C, the 2022 Public Safety Legislation, Sheriff Chad Jensen.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and Counselor for giving me just a few minutes today. I'm on there for a lot of different reasons today, but I'll talk about legislation first. They asked me last year what I thought of legislation and what I thought a good session looked like. Because I think there were like 1,600 bills or something that got filed. And I said a great session to be like four, not 1,500. Four would be the best session and then we'll kill two of them and only two bills will pass the entire year. Not so lucky, some, I guess, but.
I second that motion.
I second that motion as we're going to this session. And I don't know how many bills have been filed already, but comparing last year to this year, with at least the law enforcement and public safety, the bills that have been filed so far, we're in better shape this year as far as law enforcement goes than last year. Last year, there was a total of about 215 law enforcement bills. It was the year of police reform, I guess. Out of the 115 bills, I think 35 or 40 of them got passed and we had a hand in saying most of what those bills ended up looking like in the end. And we, we were able to kill a whole lot of them before most of them, a lot of them even saw the light of day. The biggest thing that happened last year, and we're kind of moving that into this year again, is the, the whole reform movement of the criminal justice system that took place starting in about 2015. And it seems like there's been some sort of criminal justice reform. About every two years, they come around with something else that, that they think should be fixed. And a very wise man told me last year, he says, they got to just stop with these reforms until they know that the first reform actually worked. Because you reform a broken system, now you got a second reform that's broken. Then you reform another piece of the system, now you got three pieces of the system that are broken. JRI, we'll talk about that one again in just a second. That was 2015 where they basically revamped the entire justice system and reduced all the criminal penalties. Sentencing commission was changed quite a bit. And really, it, it created a climate where there's no consequences for bad actions anymore. Last year, then another reform came out with Bell, 2020, Bell Reform came out, which basically nobody got booked into jail. And when you did get booked into jail, you just got booked and released, almost regardless of what, what the crime was. We were pretty successful last year with House Bill 220, Representative Schultz ran that for us. And we repealed 2020's Bell Reform and rewrote Bell Reform all this entire year to have Bell Reform, House Bill 220 pass in special session to put at least the Bell system back in some perspective that, that people can actually go to jail when they create a crime. And there's some consequences to get out of jail. You're just not released because that's what the, the law said at the time. That was literally a year's worth of my time that I will never get back. It, we met every Tuesday at the Capitol for an entire year with a working group of about 40 people. And most of them were great. And I do mean most. Sometimes you go to those meetings and, no offense to our good county attorney, the other attorneys in the room. But oftentimes, it's legislators are attorneys, they're, work on the opposite side of where I work sometimes in the criminal justice system. But often, I mean, when we started this, it was like us against them, really. It was like you got the attorneys against the police or the legislatures against law enforcement. But in the end, we came up with the product, with all sides being not completely satisfied with the outcome. But I think if, if it's one-sided heavy, like Bell Reform was when it started, then that's a problem. Because you had half the population that was upset and the other half that was happy that they got the bill passed that they wanted. We, the compromise, I don't love that word, but there was a good compromise and both sides got most of what we wanted out of Bell Reform. So it was a year's worth of work and a lot of time, but I think the end product in, the special session in August was what we were looking for to begin with. If we didn't do anything right last year, at least the Sheriff's Association made a splash and legislature, legislators now actually call us and say, hey, before we run this bill, what do you guys think of this before you come out and mass force and kill it before it even sees the light of day? Which has been a refreshing piece, because if legislators would do that regardless of what bill they're trying to run, whether it be a law enforcement bill, or a real estate bill, or a healthcare bill, if they would ask the people in the boots on the ground in those specific fields, they would get a lot farther and get a better result from the things that they write if they would just reach out to those groups who it's mostly affected by. So we did make a splash that way, which I think is, which is great. I've been called several times a week, starting in about, it's when the session get over, March 5th? About March 14th, the phone call started again, so, hey, we're going to run this bill next year. What do you think the sheriffs are going to be with this one? And they've, they've really been asking for input the entire year long, leading up to the session that comes about next week. And it's been a real treat, really, to see what bills are coming out, what good bills are coming out for law enforcement and public safety. Because there's, the states finally realized that the experience and the experiment of what JRI was didn't work. The state crime report is very telling in what happened with JRI and the results of some of that. And there's going to be a lot of undoing of a lot of the aspects of the JRI this year to try to bring public safety and, and victims back into perspective as to what happens in our state. So I think I'm looking forward to a lot of those bills and there's a bunch of them that are each going to tackle little pieces of the entire system. But I think there'll be some welcome changes for all of us. And for public safety, the public's, what's most important with all this stuff. I mean, I, I serve a purpose in the public safety realm, but law enforcement can only do so much when laws state what you have to do. County attorneys can only do so much when it comes to prosecution and sentencing when the law ties your hands in a lot of respects on what you can actually do to make public, to make our public safe in our own community. So there's some great things coming, coming that way. A big one coming out this year is we, I beat this drum locally because it's a problem here, but it's a bigger problem across the state is recruitment and retention. There's about 7,700 law enforcement and corrections officers in this state. And right now, well not, well probably right now still, probably more. But last week, they were down about 1,100 spots statewide in law enforcement and corrections. We're working really closely with Representative Gwynn. I spent quite a bit of time on the phone with him today, looking at retirement bills and what, at least in that piece of it can, can be looked at. I think all the agencies have stepped up across the entire state and they looked at wages and benefit packages and things that, that we can do on a local level to address the recruitment and retention process. And it's time for the state to step up and, and take care of the one big piece that nobody here can take care of, and that's dealing with the URS. And we all pay into the URS. I mean, those who retired, it's a great benefit, but unless I know something different, that is 100% funded and regulated by the legislature and they have total control over what happens and that's a problem. I've tried to run a retirement bill and represent Val. Helped me a few years ago on one. And it was, it was a bill that, it's helpful, but it's not, it wasn't real helpful. And we knew that going into it. But the idea that bill was the legislature needs to hear about a URS bill every single year until they decide to do something to fix the system. I don't think public safety in general speaking is looking for some, that golden goose is going to be handed to us at, at retirement. But when you got 1,100 holes, agencies have stepped up and done what they can with wages and benefits. One piece that hasn't been tweaked, they've been unwilling to tweak to this point, has been the retirement system. And that's, only the legislature can tweak that. And they're going to get it with, with both barrels this year. That bill's big, it's expensive, it's complicated. But I think so right now, it's got some pretty good traction. It went through committee and it actually got a committee vote to move forward going into the session. So I'm hoping that if there's been a year that they're going to do something with the URS, that this may be the year that, that we're lucky enough to have that happen.
Sheriff, how many are we down in our county right now?
With the sheriff's office? We're down five with about three more who were talking about retirement by spring.
So we might be down as many as nine by spring.
Yeah.
You got some coming out of the academy that look promising?
The academy just started last week, so I'm not sure what the academy looks like. We tested, we test about three times a year. We tested in October and we had seven applicants come take our hiring test. And out of those seven applicants, I think we're going to be able to hire two because of backgrounds and different things that, that will not let somebody be hired. The academy class before, before Thanksgiving was sitting at about 10 candidates, 10 cadets. I think they've done a little bit better now, I think their number's up to about 20. But if history proves itself, and I'm hoping it's not right, I hope this is a great class that we can all benefit from. But this history has shown that half of them will wash before the academy ends. And when we, if they do get to the end and graduate in November, some of them won't be able to pass the background. So out of 20, there might be eight to 10 that are available for hiring. I love, I mean, laterals are great, love the laterals when we can get them. But really, the only thing we do is rob Peter to pay Paul when we're hiring laterals. If I was to get five deputies from Box Elder County to come over here to work, well that just leaves Box Elder County five people short. We're not doing anything currently in the system to, to bring new blood and new recruits into law enforcement and public safety. Everybody's just stealing from each other and that's what happened with this, with this wage war that happened across the state this past year is everybody's jockeying for position and see who can steal from who. And what's great for Salt Lake City would stunk for Salt Lake County. And what was good for Salt Lake County was horrible for West Jordan. We've done nothing, really, the cities and the counties have done everything they can do wage-wise and benefit-wise. It's really up to legislature now to take the next step and look at this retirement piece. And that's not going to be the whole, they could fix it exactly how we want it to tomorrow. When that's, still not going to fix the whole problem. But you got to give people some incentive to come into public safety. I mean, given the climate in the, not so much our state specifically, really not in our county, because we have great support for public safety in Cash County. And we relatively have pretty good support across the state for public safety. But we all watch the news or national news or try not to watch it, but it gets thrown in your face all the time. It's a sentiment for public safety in law enforcement. Is the sentiment for public safety and law enforcement in this country still stinks? And until we can change that sentiment, why would you wanna get in this line of work? And that's, that's the narrative that needs to start getting changed, but that's, that is years in the making at this point. That's not gonna happen if an elected official next tomorrow stood up and said, let's get everybody into law enforcement and rah rah rah, public safety. We are years getting that, getting that back to get people to wanna come into this line of work.
How many did we lose to other agencies this past year?
None. I don't think we've lost somebody to another agency and...
I thought we were told that we lost one of our deputies to the highway patrol.
Oh, take, you're right, one.
Was, is it just that one?
It was just that one.
But we did really well then.
We did, we did very well in this county, and it's because of the work of this council with the wages and the benefits and, and the support that you have for public safety that, that let that happen. Because that's not the case in most of the, most of the, most of the counties and really in the majority of, of the city police departments across the state.
I know we've tried really, really hard the last four years to really, really help out, and I, it's a benefit. I mean, we were losing anywhere from five to 10, and when you lose the ones that you've spent all that money training, that's not a good thing.
No, I mean, i- it's about a hundred thousand dollars to get somebody hired and get them a year into their work and get them off FTO or off training where they can actually go out and function on their own. I mean, so we're down four holes, and we're, you know, I don't have some pie in the eye, pie in the sky theory that we're ever gonna be completely full. And we have, we have a, a staff of 175 people at my office, 120 of those-ish are, are sworn. That's a lot of people that keep full all the time. We're gonna have retirements, we're gonna have people that get in this line of work, and they may do one year, two years, and think, this isn't my cup of tea. And I would hope that what's best for them, they would get out before they got so far into a system that, that they feel like they're stuck and they're trapped, and then they're really not the employee that any of us are looking, looking to have. So I don't blame somebody who gets into the line of work and gets out after a couple years when they see what it's about. What hurts is when you lose that five and six-year person who you've got a lot of money tied up into, a lot of time tied up into, you've got some experience that they offer, and then they bail because of more money or to another agency or something else. And really, because of the work of this council, we don't have people jumping ship to go to other agencies.
That's different than five years ago.
Oh, I'm telling you. I mean, at one point, five years, five or six years ago, we were down 15 to 17 people at any given time, and we battled our way back, and I, I really suspect that we're always gonna be down three or four. There's just no way to keep that many, that big of a staff, completely staffed 100% of the time, all the time. Now, look at what we're gonna do this year. I mean, we might get some great lateral that's gonna come through between now and May. But if we don't, we're just gonna have four or five holes that just aren't gonna get filled until that academy class graduates. And that's really kind of the cycle we're in. We are so dependent on what happens with, with that Bridgeland Academy, that's really our sole hiring point. Um, and we need, we need that academy to stay strong, we need it full of good cadets, so we have hiring pools, and not just for us. Every agency in this valley is the same as us. You know, we're not, and it might be a great thing, is we're not drawing, we're not taking people from the WASAT's front, we're not taking people from Utah County that's gonna uproot their lives and move to Cache County to come work in Cache County. Um, since I've been sheriff, I've made it a pretty big point that I don't hire people specifically if they're coming from the outside back to Cache Valley, unless they have some roots or some ties here to the valley, so they're not just necessarily chasing dollars. They do have something that ties them to our community, whether it be family or however it works. And we've been successful with that, cause we don't have, we haven't recruited a lot outside coming in, but the ones that we have recruited that way haven't left, because they had a reason that they wanted to move to Cache County. They're not just chasing money. And we don't, we don't, we don't want the employees who are just chasing dollars. I mean, we can hire them today and they'll leave, we don't want them to leave two months from now, because Brigham City decided to pay more to be competitive. That's not the kind of employees that, that we want as a county, nor do our citizens deserve as, for public safety in our community.
So Chad, your biggest concerns then are, are recruitment and retention, and then the JRI?
JRI would, those two things will be the big ones that, that will spend the bulk of our, and for me, I'll have to spend the bulk of my time on this year, will be those two particular things.
Do you have any bill numbers yet that we should be watching for?
Um, I will email those out to all of you, I've just kinda been watching it. We have, there's two different groups that I'm part of, um, as the association president. One is the Law Enforcement Criminal Justice Committee. Um, they do a great job of tracking all the law, the public safety and law enforcement bills. Um, I'm also on the CCJJ, um, Criminal Juvenile Justice Liberal, whatever you wanna call that group. Um, uh, that group, and they track everything through every, through every piece of legislation, whether it be public safety, fire, education, law enforcement. Um, and both of those are on, online. Anybody can jump on and see what bills are being filed and which committees that they're going to through that whole session. I'll send the links out to you guys, and you guys can just track them as you wanna track them as the session moves on.
Thank you. Did you have anything else on the legislation, or do you wanna move into the animal update?
Um, let's move on to the, and unless they've got questions about the legislature, we can move on to the next.
Are there any questions on the legislative side? Okay, let's talk about the animal shelter.
Okay, now that, that actually coming along very well. They were a little bit slow to get started, and I understand that, because it's a, construction's a tough time right now. Um, they've done more on that thing in the last three weeks than they've done in the seven weeks previous to that, but the footings and foundations are poured. They backfilled the entire site today, and, uh, they're getting prepped. I think they'll probably start the masonry work Monday or Tuesday. We have a, an opening date of May 19th. May 19th is the, is the, the contracted number of days. Um, I don't know if John was part of this meeting, but Chief Deputy Billidoo met with the contractors today, and they are dead set that they're gonna make it in time, and we'll see. I, I'm gonna give them my faith right now, because that's all I have. But, uh, but there's things that happen if they don't make it on time, and we'll, we'll look at that if we have to, but I'm hoping we can just be done and be open and, and move forward.
You know, I would guess that the citizens that's out there in the audience don't even know, uh, where this new facility is. Why don't you just briefly explain where it is, so they can watch it as, as it starts to develop and, and, and is built? Because most of us will be driving past that area where it's at.
And how it's gonna operate?
Okay, the, just a, a little update to the, to the, to the audience is, um, the county, um, through my office and through the county council, is going to build a animal impound facility, um, that's gonna be used by any of the cities in our valley who want to be part of that facility and bring their animals to be impounded. Um, we've worked with a nonprofit, um, it's a group of vets who are gonna come in and do the back half of the building, who will take care of, um, the medical needs, the feeding, the cleaning, the care of the animals. Um, they'll also be working with Bridgeland and USU with some of their students, um, as they need their outwards and experiences, they're coming through their educational system to, to get the hands-on experience, um, working with, with animals. Now, the one vet that I talked to, he's been a vet for 30 years, probably. He said he went to vet school, he actually did surgery on, what'd he tell the, two? Two live animals, because that's what there was. And he did two spay and neuterings his entire time in vet school, because there was never the opportunity for, at vet school, for them to have interaction with, with live animals. So I'm excited for that. I think it'll be a great service to, um, the community. It's being built on the sheriff's office property on Second North and 10th West, it's just at the east of the main sheriff's campus. Um, so feel free to drive by, um, look at it, ask any questions. Um, I did reach out to all the mayors, and I think Gina's part of this email group. I'm gonna meet with all the mayors, um, or their representative on February 2nd. And the ultimate goal between that is, A, is to invite them to be part of the facility, but also look at what county-wide ordinances can be. I mean, Logan has an ordinance, Providence has an ordinance, River Heights has an ordinance, Nibley has an ordinance, they all kinda read the same thing, but none of them necessarily are the same thing. Um, we do animal control countywide, and, and our guys have what they call is the animal control bible. If I'm in Providence, what code am I using over here? And if I go to Millville, what code is it over here? And if I go to Wellsville, what code is it here? It'd be great if we could do some way, work it out, where there's a county-wide animal control ordinance that covers all the city's needs as it deals with animal control. We wanna look, as many of the mayors that called and said, why don't you guys just take all the dog licensing or animal licensing? And that might be something that, that we do at that facility, we just do all the licensing for all the cities in the community. Um, the vet group and the nonprofit, they wanna do, um, spay and neutering clinics, chipping clinics, do a lot of things, it'll be a great public, not only a great public service to our, to our citizens, but also a huge help to animal control. If you can go out and you can scan a, a dog and know where to take it back to, rather than bring it to an impound facility and have that cost either come to the county, the city, or to the citizens, they still might get a ticket, but they're not gonna have to pay to get their dog out of impound. So that, I, I don't know, there's not really a downside to how this thing is put together so far. Um, I'm, I look forward to meeting with the mayors and whoever their representatives are, to see what their ideas and what their thoughts are. And we do have a couple of citizens who are gonna be part of that working group to hear what the citizens' concerns are. And realistically, I hear as many complaints about animal control stuff in unincorporated county as I hear from our contract cities. And a lot of that is, we don't have a real strong animal control ordinances in Cache County. We live in a farming community, and it's nothing for a farm to have 50 cats. Well, 50 cats in the county is a different story than 50 cats in a house in the middle of a city. Um, so I, I do look forward to hearing what, what some of our county residents, and really any residents of the county have to say, and how they would like to see the facility operate. Um, I, the thing, I think the greatest thing about this animal control facility is it's something that the entire community and every city in the county can be part of if they choose to be part of it, if that's the direction that they wanna go. Then we can build some great partnerships and relationships, just by being able to be part of that one working group and that one facility, um, as far as county government goes with our, with our partnering and our neighbors in city government.
Ms. Chad, any questions on the animal shelter? Okay, so you're also on next, I'm glad we got you three in a row on here. You're also on next to request, um, to create two full-time positions using consolidated part-time positions.
You know, I think I wanna hold off on that one, we're just trying to look at, because we have the holes in the law enforcement side, I wanna look at more at what we can do with our civilian staff, and maybe staff the booking and the control rooms, um, before I come and ask for more bodies. I think there's, we can do it with the part-time staff we have, but I, I wanna look at those positions and what we can do internally, efficiency-wise with some of our other staff to see how we can better manage some of the holes that we have. So if I, I don't wanna really, I don't wanna do this one tonight, but I will come back when I look at this a little bit closer, eight, my whole organization-wise, and see what, what we can do and what some efficiencies and the needs are.
Okay, thank you Chad, thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to item 7C, um, an update on the, how we're gonna update the code from some of the county.
Thank you, I'm gonna pull up a very brief PowerPoint on this. You know that, that I've talked about how our code can use some updating, and we've, we've begun that process, and, uh, Taylor Swartson, who's one of our newer civil attorneys, has been heading that up and started with, um, you know, we say the low-hanging fruit, some easy things to grab. He grabbed initially a, uh, one of the code provisions regarding trespass on, uh, county property, and it seemed like a fairly, um, straightforward update, low-hanging fruit. Um, that the address of the county building was, that listed in the code was outdated and some things like that, but as we brought the proposed update to the ordinance and policy review committee, discovered that discussion of what seemed like easy low-hanging fruit took a full hour, and the issues still weren't resolved. Um, so he's moved to even more low-hanging fruit, which, um, we reviewed in today's ordinance and review, ordinance and policy review committee, which was just, he's identified county code sections that refer to the Utah code, where the references to Utah code were outdated. So that any place that we're referring to the Utah code, we're making sure that those Utah code sections are still current and there. We have seven, uh, ordinances that'll hopefully be in front of you at your next meeting, um, that would just be those standard updates. Um, that's kind of a background of what, what we've done in terms of actually, um, changing code to this point. As we've identified other things, looking forward, I felt like it would be helpful, um, just to, to review kind of the legislative process in very broad terms at the state level, and then analogize that here to the county level. Um, as the state code needs to be updated, or issues need to be addressed, the identification of those issues generally, um, happens by interested constituents or individual legislators who have an interest. They say, here's what I'd like to, uh, pass some legislation regarding. They then, uh, research possible solutions, uh, primarily through legislative committees with some staff assistance to do that. And, uh, then the legislators select, here's the kind of bill I wanna run, now that, now that we've looked into the issue, and what are the solutions, this is kind of bill. At that point, um, is when the Office of Legislative Research and General Counsel gets the most involved in drafting up a bill to match one of those solutions. And then, uh, that goes back and forth with the sponsor legislators to get it, uh, reviewed and revised to be in a form to then send on as a bill to the legislature. You're the legislative body for Cache County, and so as we kind of look at the same process at the county level, um, ideally, it would be you council members identifying interests, you know, issues that you're interested in, that you're concerned about, or you have interested constituents who bring them to your attention, as here's issues that need to be addressed. What we're really talking about now is that the, the county code has enough, uh, places that just need updating, that, that the attorney's office is willing to, to go through the code and identify, um, here, here's some places where somebody ought to take a look at it. The more we do that, and if you just go through our code and note the last time that different parts of it were updated, you'll see 1987, 1970 this, 1994. Um, it's not hard to find, uh, provisions of county code that ought to get a fresh look. So we could start giving you quite a list, and I think that staff in other offices could, could just readily start giving you quite a list. And then there's the question of who ought to research and dig into the possible solutions and, and figure out what are the, the best options. I'm happy to have, uh, attorneys in my office help with that. But, but I don't feel like, um, as, as we've talked about it and looked into it, it really ought to come from the council to head up, uh, priorities and, and lead out in what do you want researched, what questions do you want answered, and that sort of thing. And here's an example. Um, we, there have been some, uh, dog bite incidents in the county, three different dogs, um, where, uh, the, the dogs have gone after multiple people, bitten multiple people, and we, and so then the question comes from animal control, what can we do, and the neighbors, what can we do? We have no county ordinance that allows, uh, for a vicious dog to be put down. Um, and so we can cite a dog owner repeatedly, um, but the dog's going to go back to that owner, um, eventually, and nothing that the county can do, um, with regard to the dog itself. Uh, and yet the dog continues to bite people. Or we don't have an ordinance that would allow for putting down the dog. Maybe we don't want an ordinance, uh, that would allow for putting down the dog, that's a decision for you all. If we did want such an ordinance, we, my office has looked into how other municipalities and counties handle that sort of circumstance, and some put it in front of a judge, that if you prove to the judge that it's a vicious dog, then the judge can order that it, the dog be euthanized. Some have a community, uh, a committee that is appointed, and community members decide whether the dog is sufficiently dangerous that it ought to be euthanized. There's a lot of possible solutions. It's not really for my office to recommend the correct policy on that, or if this is the priority of the county at this time. So, um, this is where we could actually use some direction and probably some further discussion.
Um, just like this issue that you've just said, I wasn't aware, you know, that there wasn't any ordinance or anything like that, is there a way that you could possibly... Is there a way that you could possibly notify the council when something like this comes up and say, okay, we need to look into this and then we can take it to the ordinance and policy review committee meeting and?
Yes, and this, that's exactly what I'd like to do. This has come to my attention in the last week and a half.
Okay.
So this is a new one that, that we do want to bring to the council's attention because it's, the rubber's meeting the road right now. Um, and so the ne- the next question there is, is it best to have the, um, ordinance and policy review committee be the body that does all of this work of researching, uh, the possible solutions once an issue is identified? And my suggestion is that it's probably not and I'll, I'll give you, um, my reasons for that. Um, and maybe before I go to that slide, if you think about the dog bite issue and our ordinance and policy review committee, our ordinance and policy review committee, um, does very good work and there's good people on it and, and good work has happened just in the last year. But then, but as you think of the composition, we have, for example, our county assessor, we have our, uh, HR director, I'm on there as an attorney, um, and we have our fire chief on there. So then a dog issue comes up, is our county assessor and the fire chief and our HR director and the attorney, the best people to research and hash out what's the best way to handle a vicious dog? Or would it be best to have a committee that's more specific with an interested member of the council and maybe our sheriff's animal control people? And, and maybe it still includes the fire chief, although that's not directly related to dogs. But have some people that are more interested and have expertise in that area address it rather than have good folks but no expertise in the area addressing each and every piece of, of legislation that, that we're going to look at. The county code actually contemplates, uh, that this happened by committee of the council, um, and, and maybe not a standing, uh, policy and review committee. Uh, the, this is from the county code, the types of meetings that the council would have, your regular meetings, we know about those special meetings, um, when, when something more frequent is needed, emergency meetings and emergency meetings, we know about closed meetings. But then there's the committee meetings, is another type of meeting that the council, council can hold and what, what would those committee meetings look like? Um, the council may convene committee meetings at any time for the purpose of study, discussion, investigation, formal hearings or inquiries, workshops or presentations by and responses from citizens or other interested persons or groups. Our county code really has already set this up, um, for, for this to be the, the mechanism to dig into how to prepare and, and prepare for legislation. And so I'm, I'm coming to suggest that the council, um, begin the practice of holding, assigning, uh, committees and holding committee meetings, uh, that as the code here would say shall be open to the public and public notice shall be given. Uh, our current ordinance and policy review committee, that's not required, there's not, um, a quorum of the council there. I don't know that this contemplates a quorum of the council, but, but that the council designate a committee to study a particular issue and, and have, have that noticed and open and, and dig into what's the best way to handle vicious dogs, for example. Um, and, and then once a solution there, so I'm, I'm suggesting that, um, that you look at the county level, that there be couns- council committees that research possible solutions as the attorney's office helps to identify issues of, of urgent concern and, and then my office is happy to help staff those committees and work with those committees.
So John?
Oh, sorry. Hasn't that, that's kind of how it's been done in the past, meaning that as it becomes an issue in one thing or another, then all of a sudden we start addressing it. And then we change ordinance, we work with it, then we try to get an ordinance that we think is good. Fifteen years later, all of a sudden, another issue in that same thing comes up, oh, now it's an issue, then we start, you know, that's, that's why you see all these different dates and all these ordinances, is because we've addressed them like that.
Yeah.
And I think that we were looking at trying to go through the whole thing.
Yep.
Not as an issue at a time.
And that's what I'm looking at as well.
Okay.
And so I, I can name off four, um, well, three that seem fairly urgent right now, want to rec- would, would recommend committees. Uh, the dog one that I've just raised. And then as you look at, as we've looked at that dog ordinance and realizing that as we're getting questions, how can we take care of the dog, there's nothing to be done, that the whole animal ordinance for the county, um, is very old and if we're going to address the dog part, maybe the whole animal ordinance ought to be addressed as well.
Can I jump in there for just one second?
Yep.
That's kind of what the sheriff's looking at, meeting with the city representatives and I volunteered to be on that committee or he asked me to be, I can't remember because I'm on the ordinance review committee, um, to look at possibilities of countywide. So if we need to look at an animal control, it might be good to let that committee, see where that goes and what suggestions they have for us.
Yep, that's very timely to have the, that all happen at the same time.
That we're not duplicating efforts.
I, I just want to finish one comment and then I'm happy to field those. So I, I'd want to highlight, um, the ones where there are immediate issues. This animal one, our code regarding the county auditor and audits that happen where our county practice of auditing and our county code for auditing don't quite match up and they need, um, some fairly urgent attention. Um, I know that there's been discussion regarding the fire district and whether to have that, um, be, remain a, a county department or, uh, function as a, its own entity, that ought to get addressed. So when, when there are those that, there are urgent current issues, Representative Erickson, I want to raise those initially to make sure those are flagged first, but then behind that, that we are in a, um, organized way going through the code and, and then identifying others that need updating, even if the, there's not a current issue happening on it. What I guess I'm saying is, as we've begun that process, I think we can bring in just about every major section of the code and say, we need a committee and an update. Um, and, and so it, maybe it's good that you'll get to revisit your salaries. We're, we're going to come and ask you if, if we really want to update this code, I think you're all going to need to head up some committees and do some digging in and, and research and we're happy to help you and maybe if we're going to do enough updating, I'll come and say we need another attorney, I don't know. Um, but that, there's a lot of work that can be done there in the code to update it and bring it current. Thankfully, we don't have too many issues where the, the fact that it isn't updated is meeting a on-the-ground issue today, but we'd like to get ahead of that. I'm, I'm happy to answer other questions.
Clarifying question, John, are you suggesting a separate ad hoc committee be formed for each of these issues? So perhaps an ad hoc committee specifically for these animal issues and then a separate committee specifically to look at the fire issue, for example, is that what you're suggesting?
That is what I'm suggesting. Uh, and/or, um, we know that the, the alcohol on the fairgrounds, that that's an issue that is current. There's a fairgrounds committee already at two levels, I, I think. And, and so that's, there's already a committee that's appropriate to address that without sending it to the policy and, and ordinance review committee. So in some instances, there are some natural bodies to be the one to look into an issue, but either have a specific committee for an issue or I don't know if you'd want to do as the legislature does and have some topic committees, um, that, that legislation gets assigned to. I don't know that we're that sophisticated at this point.
Is your thought that the existing ordinance and policy committee would cease to exist or that it would still be a final step that these ordinances would come through before coming to the full council?
I've put in on, on this slide here, down at the, um, review and revise draft legislation part, that I, I see that being where the ordinance and policy review committee could probably best serve is now that we've got a proposed solution and some draft legislation, maybe we run it through that committee that does have representation from the broad swath of the county to kind of take a final look and see if there are issues. And it, I think that fourth, I know that the ordinance and policy review committee is looking at, uh, per diem, uh, rates that apply across the county. Those sorts of things, I think, could continue to come through the ordinance and policy review committee in the first instance when it, when it really does affect the whole county and it maybe becomes more of a policy review committee at the, dig in at the outset and a, uh, ordinance review committee on, on the last step before an ordinance would come to the county council.
You know, I, I like this idea and I like the idea of having other committees, but I know that having lots of committees can also become very overbearing and hard to be like herding cats. Um, I would think it might be helpful if it started at the ordinance review committee because there's some good folks on there from different walks of life and we do have, you know, sheriff's deputy on there. Um, maybe if it's kind of started there, okay, we need to do this, do we need a committee besides us to do that? Because it could also become really overbearing for that committee to take on a whole lot as well, but it seems like it would be good to coordinate that with that committee because it's got really key people on it, you know, HR, you know, attorneys, fire, sheriff, landies, council members. Um, we have the assessor on there, but she's, she's been with us a long time and, and is just a really great wealth of information about the county. So, um, I think I would, I would like to see it kind of starting there and, and having that kind of be the nexus or the, the point. And then if we need to send it out to a, a committee because that's too much for them, we could do that.
My question was, is just like you say, uh, who decides who's the committee or if a committee is needed?
Right.
Is that up to the council, is that up to the attorney or whatever? But if it falls back on the ordinance committee, then I see that as being the group that decides it.
Well, the ordinance committee is our committee, it's a council committee to help us, to advise us, so ultimately it would fall on the council, but if we wanted to let the ordinance and review committee figure out if more committees were needed, that might be a good place as well. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
The only thing that I see with that is that, um, then things get kind of held up. You know, we, we look at the ordinance and review committee and, I mean, on some issues, how long have we been working on one issue? If some of these are something that we need to get done and taken care of, we should probably jump on it or do whatever needs to be done without waiting till next month when we have another ordinance and policy review meeting.
The, the thing that, that I, and, and the attorneys that I'm working with, as we've talked, we, we're hesitant to start proposing policy.
Mm-hmm.
And, and bring to the council or the ordinance and review committee, ordinance and policy review committee, here's the right animal ordinance, um, with, where there's multiple options of how to do it. That, that ought to come from you all saying, here's how we'd like to address it, now will you draft up an ordinance that addresses it that way? And then we're happy to do that. Um, but, and, and whether that's the attorney's office or development services or wherever, we're happy to provide our input, um, as questions are asked, but, but it would really be best if the council says, here's the solution we want to get at, will you go and, and research the questions or draft the, the ordinance? Um, I, I think that given the code provisions, if we're, if the ordinance and policy review committee is a committee of the council that, that we're going to say is a committee meeting, I think that needs to begin to be, uh, noticed and public, probably held down here where the public can attend and, um, and treat it as a council committee. And, and then, um, if subcommittees of that or whatever need to be formed for topic-specific issues that, um, council members get assigned to head up those sub, subcommittees, if that's what they're called.
Any other questions, council? Any other answers? Thank you, John.
And would be happy to continue this discussion.
Yeah, we'll get at this.
And we will continue to highlight sections as we work through the code that could use updating, um, and especially those where the rubber's already meeting the road.
If you get tired of thinking about it, just send it to another committee.
Organize another committee and send it to them.
Okay, let's see. Okay, we are on initial proposals for consideration of action. So eleven A, um, resolution twenty-two-two-dash-oh-one, a resolution declaring Cache County uses the Cache County Council districts as the voter participation areas required under Utah Code, section twenty-eight-seven, four-oh-one-point-three. John, can you tell us about this?
Sorry, I was following up, I'm sorry, I'm right here. Which one are we on?
We are on eleven A, the voter participation, um, areas.
I think that, um, Jess could also address this, but the, the state code requires the designation of voter participation areas. Uh, county where the council seats are not at large, they can serve as the voter participation areas. Our office is recommending that and be prepared in ordinance that would allow it.
Jess, I had a question on the map that you gave us. I don't get it, so forgive me, but the, the red and then there's a green outline and then there's one with purple, so I, I'm not really understanding how, does some of it, some of the participation areas go out into the forest? I mean, it looks like the whole county.
Oh, yeah, uh, the entire county has to be represented, so you actually do represent areas that don't have inhabitants.
Okay.
And so the map reflects that, but it's, it's, it's just a boundary designation. So the boundaries that you represent currently as passed in December are the boundaries that will be used for the voter participation areas.
And the map ended up not being part of the ordinance.
Okay.
The, the ordinance just says that the voter participation areas will be the council districts.
Okay.
As they are now or it might be amended.
Thank you. That explains why I didn't understand the map, sorry about that. Okay.
It's still, yeah, if the law on that is still being.
Okay, thank you, Jess. Council entertain a motion on this to waive the rules and, if you so wish.
Well, I'll, I'll waive the rules and, and, uh, make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-two-dash-zero-one. And I'll just make a comment that, uh, I'm in hopes that the council districts has voted on and approved while I wasn't here can be changed because I was not happy with, with what happened with District One. But anyway, that's neither here nor there, so, uh, I'll make that motion.
So there's a motion to approve the res- to waive the rules and approve the resolution, is there a second?
I'll second up, but I think on this resolution it says including as those districts are altered or adjusted from time to time, so I think that does include that.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I was comfortable with it, with that.
Yes, we don't have to come back and, and do this every single time we adjust the council boundaries.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move to item eleven C, discussion on the plastic waste management. And we invited Mayor Daines and Isa.
If you're here, but before you guys come up, I do want just a preface from my county attorney.
John, can you give us a, um, an update on what the council needs to do, what action we'll, we'll need to take here? And what the situation is?
The, Logan City has a plastic waste management program that is proposed and I'm, and maybe be implemented, I'm not sure. And part of that is that for businesses that do not opt into the program, that they would be charged a fee of $17.50 on their garbage on top of the, the normal fee if they don't opt into the plastic waste management plan. Just as a legal matter, my office has notified at least Chair Wurden and Logan City that we believe that the, that your resolution, your latest fee resolution wouldn't allow for that. There, there is a line, a fee for other items requiring special handling. It, it's my view of that, that the regular garbage does not then require special handling, that it didn't, it, it didn't require special handling before. It, it's not now garbage that requires special handling because someone didn't opt into the plastic waste management program. So I, my, my legal position is that to charge a fee for not opting in, that a new fee would need to be adopted, a, a fee for nonparticipation in the plastic waste management plan or some, something like that, but that it doesn't fit under the language or intent of the fee schedule currently in place. Now that being said, I've also reviewed the original agreement between Logan City and Service Area Number One, and I'm not sure if there have been amendments to that agreement through the years. I presume that even if there have been, that this basic principle is still included in that agreement, which is that schedules of fees shall be renewed annually and adjusted as needed by mutual agreement by both parties. So I, I do think that there, that Service Area Number One, of which you are the board, and Logan City need to annually come to some agreement on what the fees are going to be and that neither side can, can really hold that process up without us coming to kind of a critical question on, on the viability of, of that agreement to begin with.
John, thank you. I, I just want to clarify and make sure that we understand this right. So Logan City's position, from what I understand, and Mayor, when you speak, or you see, clarify if I missed anything, is that they can move forward with the plastic waste management plan without the approval of the board, which is the county council, because the special fee, that $17, is included in what's already been approved as a fee. The county believes through you, John, that, that is not the case. And in order to, to do that, if the, if this board wanted to move forward with the plastic management fee, we would need to approve a special fee that would fit for the $17.50 fee. And if not, we would need to pass something that said, no, this fee is not included. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I think that, again, my, my view is that the, that the board would need to pass a new fee schedule that would include a specific fee for nonparticipation in the plan. Whether the, whether Logan City as a garbage collector can start implementing its program, that's a, kind of a different legal question as I've thought about that. And, and that really, there does need to be some mutual agreement between Service Area Number One and Logan City as to what the fees are going to be year to year. And so I think that this is a, a good thing to have Logan City here to talk about the plastic waste management plan, see if Service Area Number One and Logan City can reach a mutual agreement regarding the fees. And, and if that doesn't look possible, then we could talk about other questions.
Thank you, John. Mayor, thanks for being here. Sorry for the long wait.
No, we all have busy agendas. And I know we did try to get on your December agenda, just because that's the same time the count, our city council was considering it, but that's the end of your year and it was a very busy time. So we appreciate being here tonight. No, no, it's a long meeting, so I'll try and go quickly. I just wanted to give you an update on what our council had decided. Again, pre-COVID, when we had talked about implementing a plastic waste plan and we talked about a bag ban, we know that the county council was never in favor of that plastic bag ban. They just, you didn't care for that. And our council took that into consideration as we looked at other options and ways to address the problem. Isa and his environmental department came up with this potential plastic waste management plan. Now, it was based on the fact that we do have in the contract this special handling fee, and to us, the plastic waste has become an item that needs plastic, you know, special handling. And he can show you some pictures from the landfill. So, you know, we can let the lawyers discuss a little bit. And if you'd like to pass that additional fee, we are more than happy to have you do that. You know, we think perhaps that's already appropriate. You know, we do handle special waste, such as medical waste, various other things. Now, again, not everyone in the county handles plastic waste. And for those that do, with this new plan, it gives people choices. So rather than just banning bags, it gives businesses, retailers, and also industrial customers. So we've expanded the scope of how we deal with the problem. So it's more than just at a, a retail level. So those that deal with plastics could either, if they're, they can either bundle it and simply put it in the waste stream and there will be no fee. They can implement a recycling program in their own store and there is no fee. They can not have plastic bags and there is no fee. They can charge customers 10 cents for a bag and have no fee. So the point was to give options, but help deal with the problem, which is plastic waste that is creating litter in our valley. So at this point, I'll turn the time over to Isa to let him give you just a quick presentation. And again, we're happy to have further discussions, but our thought is, you know, you may not even need to consider that. If you do want to pass a fee, we would welcome that. That would be, that would be fine as well if you'd like to deal with that individually. So, Isa.
Mayor, can I ask you a quick question, just to make sure that I understand this? So the second option for retailers, if they want to give customers a plastic bag, either they charge 10 cents, and if they don't charge 10 cents, then they're going to pay the $17.50 dollars.
Or they could also have a plastic recycling plan of some sort in their store, or in their store, they can bundle the plastics. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, so those are all options. And our, you know, technically, this plan is implemented January 1, but our plan was to, for the environmental department, to reach out to all, all these businesses who are affected and say, this is a new program, these are your options, how would you like to handle it? I mean, we're not slamming a fee on right now. We want to have a conversation with them, ask them, you know, what works best for their business. And if they choose to do nothing, then we would implement that special handling fee. So that is, again, one more choice for them. If they just don't want to deal with it and want to continue to do business as usual, as they have been doing, again, they can pay a special handling fee and we will deal with it that way. So, again, trying to give people choices, not implementing a ban, but still addressing the problem. So.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. I'd like to give you a quick explanation of what the plan we're proposing is. So before I do that, let me explain what a special waste is. Special waste is a solid waste that requires special handling and management to protect public health or the environment. Types of special waste that we're already dealing with and this kind of fee already applies to, whether you have approved it separate or not, we're using the $17.50 already on some of these. Dead animal, it's free to accept, but if you bring it with the garbage and you don't call ahead of time, that's what we ask. If a farmer has a dead cow, he calls us, we dig a hole, we put it in because of the odor that comes out of that animal, we want to make sure that immediately it's addressed. But if you bring it with the garbage, a dead cow, and you have a load of garbage, we charge you. And we may even charge you $17.50 because we're handling it separate. A sludge, which is a wet waste, that we don't accept. If you bring it and we find it after you have unloaded it, we will have to handle it. The state prohibits it. We charge $17.50 to handle that. Contaminated soil, asbestos waste, pesticide containers, grease trap waste, all of these are special waste that we deal with. So what we're doing here is that, in the case of plastic, that's what we want to suggest to do. So this is some of the things we've done over the last two years to come to where we are today. In October 2018, Logan City started discussion about plastic waste. And this is primarily plastic bags and plastic film material that can be released from the truck while we're collecting in the household waste in the community, or while that truck is driving to the landfill, or when we're handling it at the transfer station, or when we're hauling it from the transfer station to the new landfill, again, finally, when we're also handling it at the new landfill. And we've had violation that was well documented from Idaho two years ago.
So in October 2018, was the new landfill open?
Yes.
It was. We were transferring waste in 2018 to the new landfill.
Yes, yes. So that was followed, 2019, we started having a discussion also in the, at the Solid Waste Advisory Board. That continued in March 2019 to April, Logan City adopted a plastic bag ban. As Mayor explained it, that was not well received. So we said, okay, how can we achieve the goal differently so that it will not be a ban? I think there is a problem with the ban. Some cities don't want to adopt that. And we adopted a management plan. We started talking about management plan. And this is how this management plan is conceived. We continued to discuss until May 2019. And at that time, this plan, which was also modified later on, was adopted and the council or the Solid Waste Advisory Board at that time asked us to go ahead and educate the public about the management plan and how it will work. We've started talking with industries and retailers. We've done a survey and we've got some data that suggested that we can implement this plan. That included talking to the, some of the retailers that basically said, just give us something that we can all adapt and work onto it. Some industries also included. One of the other problems, the ban had was just bags, was limited to bags. But we also have other plastic bag that comes from industries that is a concern to us. So this particular plan also includes that, and I will show you a good example. So the problem is that state and local federal, local and federal rule is prohibit littering. And that's what this material is doing to our streets and around the landfill also. If you have not seen, I'll have some pictures that I'll show you, and there is more also. It's anxiety and also affects our landscape. We have people at the Logan landfill and also at the new landfill doing nothing but picking up this kind of trash. We also receive people from the courts to help us with this. And during COVID, we was not able to get that, and that's what created the violation in North Valley landfill. So plastic control litter is very expensive, and I will show you some pictures that what we're doing to control so far. This fence we purchased, and it is at the North Valley landfill. You can see how many of them. They're smaller simply because we, we want to be able to move them to wherever the wind is heading at that day. So they're stockpiled right where the landfill is, and we move every morning. And we have a wind direction meter that tells us where the wind is blowing that day at the landfill. So this is first in the morning. You can see that there is a compact or chest left of the fence that is beginning in the morning. So sometime in midday, you will see this plastic, and some of these are not plastic bags. There are other plastics that came from manufacturing and industries in the community. And we also have this fence, which is right between the other fence that we have on the property, and this is 30 feet long. And you can still, see that what is escaped from that other fence is again, catch on this one. And the last fence is also the farm fence that is to the end. So this is the kind of problem we're dealing with at the landfill, and you will see it also at the Logan Transfer Station location. This is our recycling facility projection from Alsobes in, in Hiram. It has been brought back, most of this is plastic. So whether it's intentional or by mistake, it gets into our recycling material. Alsobes will go through it, they will remove it, they will send it back to us. It's not recyclable.
Is that what was put in the blue cans? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
So what we've done so far to educate the community as well as retailers is basically go over and have a discussion with them, what can they do to help us? And plastic waste education was going on over close to two years right now, that we've talked with all of them, almost all the significant ones. This little one is, there is over 3,000, I believe, I was told, that businesses in this valley that could be affected. But some of them are insignificant, so we focused on the bigger ones and we've talked with most of them. So the plan basically explains is that we want to minimize plastic waste nuisance. There is nothing more than in there. 20% of the waste we handle every day is plastic. But only less than 1% is the problem, which is the thin ones. The other plastic comes with the waste, and it's not a problem to us. It's heavy enough to stay in our trucks, in our facility. So we also want to meet state and federal requirements. If we have another violation in North Valley, I think that will be unfortunate. And Idaho will be unhappy with us. And also-
So how do you get a, a violation? Is it a plastic bag or it could, could it be a paper bag?
It's plastic bag.
But, but could you get a violation for another type of refuse? Another type of litter?
Oh, absolutely. If we litter it, yes.
So that would be your violation that puts you in the red category? It's not necessarily a plastic bag?
It is plastic bag, the violation we had last time.
Okay, so if you get your next violation, but it is a diocant that was empty and blew over, that doesn't kick you out? That's a different violation?
Absolutely. But generally, that doesn't happen.
So the regulator's only getting you for plastic bags, not other types?
Because it is nearby farmers.
Right. But what I'm asking you is a yes or no question. Your next violation, if it's not a plastic bag, doesn't count to-
I have no intention of having another violation that is not plastic.
Isa, yes or no? Let's not play games. Is the next violation a plastic? If, if the next violation's a paper bag that blows over into Idaho and Idaho comes after you, does that clear the field? Are we talking about plastic bags? Are we talking about litter in general?
Any violation is a problem.
Any violation, not just plastic bags?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we want to be good to our neighbor. These are farmers that have, to begin with, problem with the landfill. But then again, if we don't control our plastic bags, right now, one of the solutions we have is we close the landfill in a windy day. And we've done that before. We also want plastic bag management to be simple so that the businesses and industries can also comply. Make it also customer friendly so that our citizens will also not be feeling that they have unnecessarily been affected. Make it also customer friendly so that our citizens will also not be feeling that they have unnecessarily been affected. Make it also business friendly and manufacturing friendly as well. So option one is if you are a manufacturing company, all you have to do is just implement a recycling program. If you cannot recycle, there are ways that companies can actually bundle these and ship it out to other locations. We don't have any recycling entity here in the valley, but there are some businesses that can ship it back. If they want to do that, absolutely, we support that. If not, they just have to contain and send it to us in a contained, in a contained manner, not in a loose uh, waste. So the loose one is the one we're against. And I will show you some pictures that our good example is of contained ones. So this is a good one. This is all plastic. And you can see it's in another plastic bag. We're okay with this. We're not asking any more, anything more than this. But if they don't want to do this and send this plastic to us, all we're saying is that it's going to cost us money to contain it, and we're charging seventeen dollars, fifty cents more to handle it.
And you'll basically do the same thing, right? In other words, you're going to bundle it, you're going to put it into something that'll just hold it together until it's buried?
By the time we attend to it, it's when it starts blowing. So we will bury it and collect it as soon as we can. So we have people out there picking up after it has been released into the air.
And we'll use it to clean the existing fence that's there. And by new fencing, we've already had replaced one section of fence because it blew over. So there are ongoing costs associated with the fencing and cleaning up the loose plastics. And we've taken quite a bit of time, so we probably better wrap up.
Sure.
So let me ask you a question about the plastic bags that have been hit the fence, that fit the fence. Are we tracking the source of those plastic bags? Because maybe one of them was me putting a loose past plastic bag in. That's still going to cause the problem. So you're going to charge um, you know, retailer A seventeen fifty per however many pounds? Because they didn't charge me ten cents for a bag, but I go in and drop the bag in my container, and it's still going to blow around. You haven't solved your problem. You've just charged more money.
No. What we're suggesting is that we pick up from the retailers as well as the industries.
So no private citizen is going to be throwing away single plat, used plastic bags into their uh, refuse containers that are going to your waste stream?
They do.
Okay.
The citizens do.
So this isn't going to solve the problem?
The citizens, that's why we are talking about offer them a plastic, I mean, alternative. One of them is offer them paper bag at the retailer. If they don't want paper bag, then they pay ten cents.
But that's only if they um, don't have any type of recycling program or like collecting.
Absolutely, yes. So this is the retailer's option.
Esa, what's the difference between the cost of a paper bag and a plastic bag? Is there, is there quite a bit of difference in cost?
This is how the ten cents came up, and I don't know exactly. There is a little bit more cost involved within the paper bag. But right now in the valley, most of these stores already offer paper bag.
That's what I'm thinking is the solution rather than doing all this talk and all this education, that just plastic bags at the grocery store and and the retail store and just put plastic or put paper out and cause problem solved? Or is that really not, is that too simple?
Well, that was the initial intent when the ban was implemented.
Because we know that a paper bag will not blow as easily as a plastic one.
And it will degrade immediately.
Well, can I take just a minute on this? Because this is something that's been driving me nuts that we do as society on many issues. That sometimes it ain't so much the things we know that get us into trouble. It's the things we know that just ain't so. Um, and for years, and I'm going to read from some research, and this comes out of, I'm going to say Clemson University and some other things. For years, we've been told that plastic bags are bad. The vast majority of the general public have fallen for that narrative, and it's hard to change people's minds once their minds are already made up. Studies have shown that people will believe lies if they hear them enough, and even people with high IQ are not immune. So how do we get people to change their mind? I'm a realist, so I know that for some people, no amount of evidence will help. Boy, are we living through that today. Their opinions are based on emotion and are set in stone. However, wiser, more open-minded people can be persuaded if the case is strong enough. And this is for those people. Here are the reasons that discard the falsehoods. What we have been told is not credible because it comes from non-experts such as hack journalists with clickbait headlines vying for views. The assertion that plastics are bad has zero support from scientific studies. It is pure fiction. More on that later. And it is vital to align ourselves with the facts because that is the only way to make wise decisions that help rather than harm our environment. And so we've got life cycle analysis studies on grocery bags. Every study shows that plastics are the best choice. Bear in mind, these studies were performed in different countries by independent organizations spanning two decades. Let me show you the conclusions, and I'm just going to quote one. This is from Clemson University from 2014. So plenty of time for us to have known that today. A compilation of all the statistically-based scientific studies shows uh, studies of litter in the US and Canada over an eighteen-year period shows consistently that plastic bags, which includes trash bags, grocery bags, retail bags, and dry cleaning bags, make up a very small portion of litter, usually less than one percent. Our results also show that paper bags, even with one hundred percent recycled content, have significantly higher average impacts on the environment than either of the reusable bags or single-use plastic retail bags. Our results in this study show that these regulations and policies may result in negative impact on the environment rather than positive. Even though paper bags come from renewable resources that are easily recycled, it is likely that they are not the best environmental choice. That's from R. N. Kimble, Life Cycle Assessment of Grocery Bags in Common Use in the United States, Environmental Studies, Clemson University Digital Press, 2014. So I'll let you finish. But this is a, this is near as I can tell, 2018, we started to decide we care about the environment. And we ought to get rid of plastic bags. But they're not the problem with the environment that we think they are. And then we expanded the scope of that problem to include uh, a special handling fee just based on these plastic bags. This is not an issue. It's just flat, not an issue. Plastics, bags are not the environmental problem. And we can go study by study if you'd like, because we're not, we're going on facts, not feelings, like we're doing everywhere else. We can go through facts. But it is not environmental problem, period.
We're not addressing that portion of the problem.
We can talk about litter if you'd like too, because plastic bags are number ten on the list of litter.
I think we showed you our fences in our landfill. We perceive it as a problem. Again, we're simply presenting this to you. Um, you're welcome to either say we endorse the plastic waste management plan. You're welcome to say we approve or disapprove adding a special fee. Again, we don't think we think it could be implemented under the special handling fee, but we're just here having the discussion to see, you know, how you would like us to proceed. Again, Logan is interested in this to try and deal with a specific problem out at our landfill that does impact the surrounding farmers and does add cost to every customer.
So if we implement this, do those fences come down? We don't have fences anymore?
No. I mean, we've already bought them. I mean, maybe we won't have to replace them as much, and hopefully we won't have to clean them as much, and it will decrease the cost. As you pointed out, we're never going to eliminate all of the plastic bags. We hope this will reduce it. We could be wrong. But we think this plan will help us reduce the litter problem at the landfill.
I think what we're, we're talking about here is we're I'm a farmer, and so I know what it's like to have farmland by a subdivision. And it's the same problem that they have out of the landfill with all the plastic blowing. And so I think we got to be careful that it's not necessarily the envi- environmental friendliness of the plastic compared to paper as much as it is the wind blowing the garbage around. Now, there's a lot of discussion that maybe still needs to be done, but that's kind of what I think Logan City is trying to tell us here is that what they're trying to accomplish is figure out a way to keep these bags from blowing all out through the farmers' fields. And we have the same problem in the local farmers' fields with subdivisions. That, I mean, you just can't imagine the amount of plastic bags that end up in our irrigation ditches, and it's all through wind. So I think we need to continue to discuss it, and I think what you're saying is probably true.
And, and that's what I'm trying to understand. Have not we already solved the problem by having the fences? What else are we going to do? The fences are there. The problem seems to me to be solved in this.
But the, the cost to clean them will be an ongoing one. And again, you could be right. Maybe we will do very little to reduce the, the waste on the fence.
So would you be willing to put in this as a temporary um, fee to say uh, instead of charging it into the future, you'd say, we're going to drop this fee in for a year and see if our costs actually are reduced?
Exactly. I think that's fair.
If they're not, you can wipe the fee out after a year?
Sure.
Do government fees ever end?
No.
That's even with the best of intentions, they never do seem to end.
But again, it will only be implemented specifically if that, I mean, this is not, you know, going to affect everyone. It will affect people that have, that put plastics into the waste stream. So, but again, you can continue to consider it. Obviously, if you choose to implement a fee at the county level, then that needs to go on for a public hearing, and, and I respect that process going forward. But maybe we don't need that. That's your decision to make.
You know, I really love your options that you are giving to retailers. You know, you're saying, hey, bundle your own plastic. Aren't, I think some of the retailers seem to be already doing
Correct, yeah. So we don't even make a phone call.
Recycling program.
Yeah.
They get the plastics, they tell their employees, they do it a certain way, they put them here. Uh, I think a lot of that's probably already happening. And that's one because of stewardship. One, they want to be known as a company that even looking around their store. I know when you drive behind Walmart out there, they've got all of their stuff just cleaned up. They don't want to be known as a trash pit as you drive by it themselves.
And a lot of the national retailers, actually within the next few years, will be eliminating plastics on their own as part of their corporate policy. So again, if they no longer offer the bags, they don't have to deal with a special handling fee.
I've also known in the past couple of years, since it became educational, there are more questions asked when you are up there paying for things. Well, I guess I better shut up because I don't go there that often. But even like IFA up there, they ask you, would you, would you like this bag?
Yeah. Yeah, I think a lot of people are trying to use less.
We are to that point, but there, I don't know whether unless you, the bags are eliminated, I still don't think that you're going to solve if you're wanting to get rid of the bag itself. Which if that's, that isn't all the problem. You said, if you look out there, there's a lot of other industrial style plastics that are being blown around out there. I think it seems like it'd be a combination of several things that have got to happen versus I hate to just, what's happening with the media is they're calling it a plastic banned waste. Really, it needs to be a plastic management problem.
Well, and that's exactly why we're, I mean, we've, we've repealed the ban.
It's not emotional unless you call it a plastic, you know, bag ban and
Yeah, but we backed off of that at your suggestion and are trying to, again, address the broader issue. So, so think about it. Let us know your thoughts. Again, we were trying to give you an update and saying this is the direction that seems logical to us to go.
Thank you, Holly, for the clarification because I was kind of in the direction that Dave was going. We hear it's a plastic bag ban, but it's more management. So thanks for clarifying.
So just to leave you with the final thought here is that this is not a ban, and it is not whether plastic is bad in the environment or good, or thi- this discussion is nothing but how can we best address the problem we have.
I do have a question for you. So you guys don't recycle the plastic bags at all. So if a business wanted to do a recycling, they'd have to figure out who to take it to themselves.
They, they can do that. Or just bundle it, bring it to us, and we'll bury it. It's not a problem.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I don't think there is a place that recycles just regular plastic. There was at one time. Didn't China take it a number of years ago?
We have researched it, and Dave may know this, is that Dean Adams, who is a member of our board, took the initiative by himself, contacted Trex and other companies in the country that will be able to take this material. And we have not been able to find it a way to recycle this particular plastic. The other plastic can be recycled, including the uh, containers for water and drinks and things like, those are recyclable. But plastic bags are not.
Yeah, there's nothing for them.
The cost, you know, it's all about cost. The costs are just too high to reclaim what value there is out of it and and without some government subsidy for them to do it, it's just too costly to, you know, to recycle plastic right now.
Our hope is not to charge anyone seventeen dollars, fifty cents. We are going to do enough public education. We're going to inform them how they can best comply our management plan, and we hope they will do it. We have no intention of charging seventeen dollars, fifty cents unless there is a repeated violation.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
So Logan doesn't think I'm picking on them because I've yelled about fees for, for years. And I was yelling about it in the county earlier before you got here in the workshop. My problem is, is that this is a special handling fee for pretty much everyday waste, right? You throw up the special handling fee and you see those things, and it's pretty obvious, dead cow, slop. That's pretty obvious. But then you go to plastic, which is a uh, a smaller part of the waste stream than almost anything else that was kind of normal. And you say, okay, we're going to charge a fee for that. If you don't say, hey, this can't really be a special handling fee, can it? Because then pretty soon it could be milk cartons. And then it'll be cardboard or whatever it happens to be, this, this normal waste. And pretty soon you're going to charge for, you're going to be paying your taxes to have a, a, a waste program and then a fee on top of everything else. So it's just a backdoor way to increase taxes. But that's not specific to me yelling to Logan. That's just me yelling about government fees in general.
We rarely use for your information the seventeen fifty to charge anyone. A good example similar to this is medical waste. All of the clinics in this valley bring their medical waste separate. They will not put it in the garbage. We have a red bin at the landfill. They bring it and put it in that container. We don't charge them because we have informed them how we can best handle that, and that's what they do. We expect this will be similar to that.
Thank you so much for being here. Oh, John?
Having heard the presentation, I'm, I'm going to I, I see there being really two circumstances here. One, one is where a retailer could be pulling, pulling their own plastic out rather than putting it in with the regular waste. And, and if they just put it in with the regular waste, then that regular waste is subject to the fence and cleaning up litter. I'll, I will think again through whether I think that the seventeen fifty fee would apply in that circumstance. When I was thinking it through before, it was more the, where you, you need to charge the consumer ten cents per bag or pay a fee for your garbage.
Yeah.
It's in that circumstance that, well, the garbage that you're sending out doesn't really change whether the consumers are taking home plastic bags. And I still don't think that the seventeen fifty fee, that this garbage that doesn't have any more or less plastic bags in it really requires special handling because you aren't, you aren't sending more bags home with people. That's where I, I don't think it fits. It may fit in that other circumstance.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that.
Okay, um, move to item twelve. We were going to talk about council member goals. Council, we did this last year, but given the lateness of the hour that we still need some discussion uh, in executive session, would there be any objection to putting this on, moving this to our next agenda?
I would definitely.
And I agree with that too because we did have a paper with the twenty-one goals, and I don't know if even half of us remember what the goals that we set. So if we could have that.
Up time, yes.
Oh, sorry.
It's on here, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't see that.
So would there be any objection, council, to moving this to the next agenda?
I think I'd be right.
December of twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, December. Yeah, sounds good. Okay, seeing no objection, we will move that to the next agenda. So Barbara, if you'll remember, I'm sure you will. And we will move to council member reports. Nolan, let's start with you. And we will move to council member reports. Nolan, let's start with you.
I don't think I have any. Glad to have another person on planning and zoning. I will give kudos and shout out to Phil Olson, who's served on the planning and zoning commission a very long time.
He was on there with Noah.
So, that man gave a lot of time to the county, and there's a lot of people on the planning commission that do. So, special kudos to him.
That's funny.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Paul?
I think I'm good right now.
You've had your say.
I got plenty more to say about this for today.
Okay, thanks. Barbara?
Okay, I do need a number for our dinner next Wednesday, Aug- August. Where did August come from? Yeah. January ninth, Beehive Grill. I need a definite number, please. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, two? Okay.
Two for me, Barbara.
Okay. Dave, two. John?
I'm going to tell you tomorrow.
Okay. Gordy?
I'll have two.
I'll have two.
Carl, you said two?
Two for me.
What time did we decide?
It's going to be at six. Two. Janine? Okay. All right, so two.
Did you get David's?
Yes.
And John will sing to us, right?
Yeah, John will be our programmer.
Yeah, John's the entertainment.
Your favorite song, John.
Don't play this, it's my heart speaker.
Or Armie Ellen, huh?
Do you want some backup music while you're singing?
Or Jay-Z.
Thank you. And other than that, thank you for your support of me and, and being the chair next year. I'll do the best I can, but I'll depend on a lot of you guys to help me out. I appreciate it.
I'll go ahead and support you for the next year, too.
Or this year. Yeah, this year, I should say.
Yeah, this year, or the next year.
Okay, so thank you. I appreciate it.
Is that everything?
Yeah.
Thanks, Barbara. Carl?
The only thing I have is that the last week of this month is the annual homeless pit count. And they can use some volunteers to help with that, especially people who can go out in the canyon areas, camping site areas, and things like that, to see if they can determine the number of homeless people and the need that exists in our, in our county.
Do you know what dates? I'm sorry, Carl.
I'll send out to everybody's some specifics on dates and contact numbers and things like that.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth.
Thanks, Dave.
Is that everything, Carl?
Yep.
Thank you, Carl. Gordy?
I just always enjoy it when Paul gets wound up, because it's what, he works hard at what he does. I appreciate him.
All right, thanks. Dave?
I just have a couple of questions that came up from some of the public lands meeting that we had. Are we charging TRT taxes on campsites?
That's a good question.
Everyone's looking.
At everybody else.
I think we might. I think I saw it one of them times.
Seems like I saw that, too.
I hope, well, because it's...
Are we collecting it, though?
Yeah, are we collecting it? And the other thing is, is our CAPO ordinance, is it set up?
That's a good question.
Because we have a deadline on that by, I think they're going to postpone it at the legislative session, so we get that thing put together. There is a deadline on us having that set up.
The large organization...
It's supposed to occur first of February, the deadline, but I think they're going to try to move that to a couple more months.
Well, I'm sorry, Dave, what was that?
CAPO, that's for the large animal facility.
Oh, okay.
Consolidated feeding operations.
Feeding operations.
That's been going on for fifteen years.
Chris, can you help us there?
Help you with what? Sorry.
Never mind. I think those are two things we need to look at. We are to have one, and there is help to most, well, several counties have already done it, and there is help out there to get it done, as far as putting that together. And it's required by state legislature that we have.
You must have a democratic organization in the federal system right now.
No. Well, Sandal.
Sandal is the one that ran it.
Is he Democrat?
It was put together way back when I was on the conservation district. So, we're talking twenty years ago.
But there's issues, the issues and protection issues that have come up. That's what we need to address.
Yeah, you haven't even heard about it until we got a new Democratic.
I think this was, I think Sandal got it, right? Because it's down in Circle Four Farms down in Hillsborough.
I'm trying to remember that. Those are two things that we need to dig into somewhere, do some more looking, because I know the, that, the TRT tax is one is, I know there's another county that's having issues trying to collect it from the BLM. And there's kind of a fight there. And I was wondering if we were collecting it from the Forest Service, you know, for those, basically, there's an overnight, any overnight state, it should be collected from what I hear. And I just was wondering if we were. So, other than that, thanks, Gina, as chair. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate that. Okay, for me, I'll mention UAC County Officials Day on the Hill. We've got a while, but just so you can get on your calendars, is February twenty-third. We'll be learning more about that. Also, I attended the Children's Justice Center Friends Board Meeting Saturday. Really impressed with that group and appreciate all that they do to keep kids safe and to make it easier for kids to report child abuse. And it's a hard thing in our society, but I'm grateful for the work that they do and glad that we have them. With that, let's move into executive session. If I could have a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move into executive session for discussion of pending or reasonably imminent litigation and discussion of the purchase of real property in the council chambers behind us. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.